Adequate notice of this planning board meeting was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar our official newspapers on March 3, 2021, and notice of the meeting was posted on the bulletin board and the municipal website.
Great. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nice that everyone was muted, let me sit there alone, thank you.
Take real call, Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Forte? Mr. Protonentes?
Here.
Mr. Carmelli?
Here.
Alright, we'll start with our workshop discussion, talk about this evening's application. Doug, if you don't mind giving us a little background and summary.
Sure. This evening, we have a minor subdivision at block 101 lot 10, basically lot into two. The parcel is in the R75 zone, it's a corner lot, and what the applicant is proposing to do is with a one lot that's oversized for the R75 zone, 10,000 square feet, and divide it into two parcels, really following the criteria of the R50 zone. It's not an R50, it's a R75, and as a result of that, the applicant requires, if they are successful, a number of variances. In the R75 zone, an interior lot requires 7,000 square feet, the interior lot they're proposing in this instance will have 5,000, the interior lot for the, excuse me, the corner lot for the parcel will be 9,000, and for the corner lot here, they are proposing 5,000. Frontage, they require a variance for frontage with regard to the corner lot where 50 feet, or excuse me, where 60 feet, 50 feet are proposed. Minimum front yard setbacks, recall that with regard to a corner lot, you'd have two front yards if you will, there will be a variance for the existing corner lot where the front yard setback at present is going to be proposed at 15 instead of 20. There will be rear yard setback variances required where 40 feet should be provided, and 30 feet are being provided. Minimum lot shape diameter wherein 30 feet should be provided, and 25 feet are provided for the corner lot. Building coverage, they're exceeding their building coverage where 30% should not be exceeded, and they're proposing 37%. So largely, what you're seeing is, you know, trying to create two lots by the R50 criteria. Anecdotally, I note that even if you were in the R50, you'd still need 6,000 square feet for a corner lot. I don't know what the applicant is proceeding under a C1 or a C2 variance, but basically, they'll be obliged to show you their proofs as to whether or not they're going under C1 or C2. C1 obviously is a hardship variance, where they need to show that because of existing conditions at the site, they can't meet the criteria. To the extent that it's an existing, though oversized, but technically conforming lot to the R75 zone, we'll have to see what they come up with to demonstrate that there's a hardship there. The C2 variance is, as we've talked about in the past, that there is a better, in a sense, design option for this property than what the municipality has designated as an R75. Again, the number of exhibits, to the extent that you've had an opportunity to review, our consulting engineers document, very thorough, covers all of the variance relief that's required, it's over Jerry's signature as well as Steve Bell's. They note the relief that you need to have for the C variance. In addition to those, again, a single lot into two, we want to make sure that they're going to provide some testimony that, again, I always state in the positive, that if curbs and sidewalks have been installed, or that if not installed, they will install them, and post-performance guarantees to make sure that those improvements are made. That the subdivision does not require the extension of municipal facilities at the expense of the municipality, and yet if you opt and leave at the applicant's carry the day, usually we want to require separate service to each one of the lots. That the subdivision will not result in affecting or adversely affecting drainage in the Paterson Basin, that the subdivision will not adversely affect the development of organic parcels, that the subdivision is not in any conflict with any provision of the master plan, official map, or the development regulations, and that no portion of the property have been involved or constituted a minor subdivision in three years preceding. Also, we'd like to have the opinion of the applicant that if they grant, or if we grant the relief that they're seeking, that additional variance relief will not be necessary to develop the property in accordance with their plan. Usually, we like to see these done within a period of time that the, at least the subdivision is perfected according to the man filing laws, and that they get started on their variance relief within a year of it being granted. So that's pretty much your application, R75 lot, corner lot, where the applicant in this instance, for lack of a better way to describe it, is trying to apply the R50 criteria. The applicant is obliged to demonstrate all of its proofs, you're not obliged to make those proofs for the applicant, they need to establish the hardship criteria. In addition, they are also asking for some waivers. They're asking for a waiver from the environmental impact statement, they're asking for a waiver from the submission of stormwater management, and they're asking for a waiver for a traffic report. Again, waivers are not variances, these are usually the checklist criteria, but in order to obtain the waiver, usually the applicant should provide some testimony that they're in pedics of the waiver, that they don't need this information to make a determination on their application, and usually, it's appropriate to ask from our engineer if they're in favor of the granting of the waiver, or to have them weigh in on the rationale for the waivers given by the applicant. That's your application this evening, we don't have any other applications, but we do have, I believe, a presentation from the Environmental Commission, April? Are we going to be doing that this evening?
Yes.
Okay, so let me make a presentation to you.
The one thing I would say to the board is that the Environmental Commission presentation really is for us to hear the comments, we don't necessarily have to offer any opinions. If you have questions, please feel free to ask those questions, but this is merely a presentation of pretty extensive work, I must commend the Environmental Commission for the work they did, it's a pretty rigorous presentation, the study they did was pretty rigorous too, so without any further ado, if we can bring the Environmental Commission reps up and go through the presentation, it would be terrific.
Can I get Ed Lippincott on here?
Should I change my name now? Change your name?
You can go with Chef Ed.
Ed, just for the record, since we're being recorded, I should just, not everybody knows who Chef Ed is. Okay, very good. So, good evening, everybody, thank you for your time, my name's Ed Lippincott, I'm the Chair of the Delmar Environmental Commission, longtime Delmar resident, live over on Fourth Avenue. I'm gonna screen share. There we are, here we are. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So, here we go. So for the last probably year and a half, the Environmental Commission has made a tremendous effort to rewrite the environmental resource inventory, and we made a presentation to the Mayor and Council already, we had the document in a digital format, for anybody who wants it or hasn't seen it, we provided paper copies to the Mayor and Council, we thought we provided enough copies for the planning board, zoning board, whoever might need them. So, they also suggested that we prepare a presentation for the planning board as well, so I'll try not to take up too much more of your time. I want to thank Krista Spurber, who lives on 8th Avenue, for, she's the graphic designer who put together this terrific PowerPoint presentation for me to share, so. I'm gonna have to take off my glasses because I can't see. Basically, the Environmental Commission is established for the purpose of protection, development, and use of natural resources, including water resources within the borough. Part of our duties are to keep records of our meetings and make an annual report to the Mayor and Council, we used to meet at the Delmar Public Library before the shutdown started, but obviously, we've been meeting on Zoom, just like everybody else. And then the last point there is prepare and keep an index of all open land areas in the borough. So that was a part of the work we did with the environmental resource inventory. I'm not gonna read all of this, but the middle part there says that the Environmental Commission should make recommendations to the planning board with respect to plans and programs for inclusion in the borough's master plan, and with respect to development and use of open land areas. And then advertise, prepare, print, and distribute Macs, books, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where the environmental resource inventory came in. The Delmar ERI is an assessment of inventory of all natural resources in the community, it's a reference for the borough to use in the master plan, and is a basis for the planning board ordinances and management. It's also an educational tool for the resources, for the residents, I'm sorry. And I believe that April, we gave her a copy, and it's posted on the borough website, and as I said earlier, the printed copies are available to anybody who needs them at Borough Hall, including the Delmar Public Library. Okay, this is, the original ERI was prepared with a grant that we got from NJEC, and we hired a consultant, and we used a couple of professionals to go around, and it probably took us a year to write the original environmental resource inventory. And it's a very extensive document, the history of Delmar and geography, and, you know, the old, old history of how the borough was formed, and what was here, or Ocean Beach, and et cetera, all very, very interesting. And then it breaks down the town into the seven different zones you see there. Beach, residential, downtown, the western residential area, which would be over by the tennis courts, Shark River Inlet, Silver Lake, and Lake Como.
Ed, what was NJEC, can you explain what that is?
I'm sorry, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, so there's a state organization, referred to as NJEC, and they provide us with, they all, lots of small grants, we've gotten grants from them to do beach plantings and things like that, but it was a pretty substantial grant that they gave us to do the environmental resource inventory originally.
Great.
And that's, you know, we pay dues to them, it's very reasonable, but all of the Environmental Commission members are allowed, they have seminars that they offer to all new environmental commission members, and they do things about stormwater management, and writing an ERI, and what are the duties of an environmental commission, it's all very, very interesting stuff. And free to all of our members. Okay, okay, so these are the major updates that we made, we felt that the ERI really needed an update after Hurricane Sandy, because I don't know about anybody else, but I've lived in Delmar since I was like two months old, and I thought I knew the town pretty good, and man, Sandy was a real eye-opener for me. I've been through a lot of storms, a lot of nor'easters, a lot of hurricanes, and that was all like next level stuff. I found out where all the flood zones were after that, including in my own neighborhood, areas that were low water that I had no idea, so we felt that the ERI needed an update after that, so we went ahead and did that. So, number one, the latest water quality reports, the DEP posts for enter cockeye, which is an indication of fecal matter in the water, they do testing at the ocean, usually at Fifth Avenue, behind Cruz Bay, behind Taylor Pavilion, and the L Street Beach. So those, that data and those links are all on the environmental resource inventory. Updated NJDEP and FEMA maps, because all of the FEMA maps have been changed, I'm sure you guys are well aware. So that, all those, all that data and all those links are included in the ERI. Extensively, we cataloged the effects of Hurricane Sandy, a lot of pictures, you know, before and after, this is what, you know, this is what it used to look like, and this is what happened, this is what it looked like the day after Sandy. We also included the Seaport redevelopment, which has gone through some changes since the original document was prepared. And the last two, number five and six, are the engineering projects that helped with flood mitigation for both Silver Lake and Lake Como. Some of the other things we've been encouraging and trying to promote in town is the use of what is called the Delmar Green Building Checklist, and its goal is to reduce the use of energy, water, and resources, and improve the well-being of the residents from a building and from a planning perspective. Energy efficient designs and construction in site conditions, water management, energy use, material selections, light pollution, and indoor environments. Increasing energy efficiency and conservation, and increase the amount of energy produced from renewable resources. And third, the use of recycled and renewable materials in new construction and renovation projects to reduce construction waste. These are a list of things to consider in rebuilding considerations. Now, part of the reason, and I don't know if any of you are able to make Krista's presentation at the Taylor Pavilion, Krista lives on 8th Avenue, her house, she was out of her house for almost three years after Hurricane Sandy, from flood damage to her house, and she belongs to an organization called the New Jersey Organizing Project, and they do a lot of work in trying to help people get back into their homes after Hurricane Sandy, but one of the things that is, a part of their, a part of their research and a part of their work is the changes to the FEMA flood maps, but also the changes that are coming in the federal flood insurance program. So we felt that the Green Building Checklist and the updated ERI was important, because these things are all gonna have a significant effect in Delmar in the future, because of the increased flooding in town caused by climate change, and if you hadn't had a chance to see Krista's presentation, it's a real eye-opener about what we can expect, if current trends continue, what we can expect to see in Delmar in the future. So this is one of the slides from Krista's presentation about flood mitigation and sea level rise, and that's, you can see that's the Shark River, and all the areas in shaded there in blue that can expect to see future impacts from sea level rise. By 2100, we are poised to lose more than 600 homes, a chronic inundation, significant impacts with one degree rise in global temperature, impacts could be felt as soon as 2030 in the K Street area and Route 35 over by the L Street Beach. You can see the edge of the slide here. So as a borough, they, there is a credit rating system as far as flood insurance goes, called the Community Credit Rating System, and it's gonna require buildings to be built four feet above the floodplain, improve stormwater runoff, mitigate against future storms and sea level rise, and the federal flood insurance program will give Delmar a rating based on how well we do, taking these matters into consideration going forward. And, I think that was the last slide I have, it is, and then there was one other thing that I wanted to share, I'm gonna go out of this screen, was to send me one more slide that I'm gonna bring up, here we are. Let me see if I can get this full scale. This, can you see that?
Yes.
All right, I can't make it any bigger. Oh, there we go. So this is lots 87, block 87, lots 1, 2, and 3, the Delmar Motor Lodge and the Water View Pavilion, which made the presentation with the Mayor and Council the other day, and this shows the flood maps, that FEMA is gonna be using the AE11 zone. So anything in this zone is gonna have to be four feet above floodplain, and you can see how it already impacts that property right there. So, one of the proposals they made was for underground parking, and that's probably gonna be a problem, so. So that's it, that's really all I had, I tried to keep the presentation short, because I know, you know, time is of the essence, I didn't wanna take up too much of your time, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions if you have any.
Any questions, anyone?
Just about the Green Building Checklist, is that something we're actively using right now?
Not that I'm aware of. I know in the past, they had, in the original Seaport Redevelopment Plan, they had what they called a LEEDS checklist, and it was, there was a checklist that the developers had to use in order to get a certain amount of points, but that went away when they redid the Seaport Redevelopment Plan, so this is something we're encouraging now.
For all construction, or in certain zones?
It would be appropriate in all construction. Every little bit is gonna help when it comes to, you know, reducing the impacts on the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Kovacs?
Just very briefly, Ed, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I think you hit the high marks. Is there a way in which the Environmental Commission, and I don't know, perhaps April already does, and I'm maybe showing my ignorance, but is there a way in which the Environmental Commission is made aware of the applications that come before the planning board, so that you can have an opportunity to weigh in and express concerns? Because I imagine a number of things are more at your fingertips than they are for the planning board members, so at least they could be highlighted as to those concerns that you have.
We try to stay abreast of what's coming down the pipe, and now we have Nick Valenti and Tom Burke are both members of the Environmental Commission, so they keep us apprised of what's coming. In the past, we always used to get, we used to see the applications ahead of time, but I think what happened, I think the, either the planning board or the Environmental Commission changed the night of the week, or the night of the month that they were meeting, and all the schedules got kind of messed up, so we're trying to, we're trying to get back in the loop here about, you know, looking at the plans before they go to the Environmental, before they go to the planning board, so that we can make any recommendations that we have. The one advantage we do have is that I sit on the TERC, so anything that goes to the TERC, I usually get to have input there before it winds up on the planning board's inbox.
Right, and that's enough for members of the board, Ed, members of the public who may be tuning in, so to speak. TERC is our, in a sense, pregame, pre-review of applications in the Seaport Redevelopment areas, it's generally limited to the commercial development, so that, in a sense, the technical review is sort of involving utilities, Environmental Commission weigh-in, all those things that more into the nuanced area of development, and whether or not it fits within the redevelopment criteria, is reviewed by a committee designated by, or identified in our ordinances, so that when we receive those applications, for the commercial applications in Seaport Redevelopment areas, they have an opportunity to weigh in as to their review, so that we can get down to more planning issues before the planning board.
Yeah, Ed, I don't know whether we can get back to the Environmental Commission recommendations, but I know in my past, I used to see that, and that was always helpful, and I agree that, you know, certainly having two members of the board could help us elaborate all the recommendations, but, you know, to Tom's point, maybe that green checklist becomes a part of that, as well as anything else, but I think that will be helpful for the board to just keep their eye on the ball, if you will, in terms of some of these environmental options, I'll call it, that we can discuss with applicants as they come before us.
And again, if I could, to the Chair, just, and I'm sure Ed is aware of this, but just for the benefit of the members, the Environmental Protection came out with tweaking some of their stormwater resources. The regulations have been on the books since 2018, and Jerry may want to speak to this also, because I imagine we're going to have to revamp our stormwater ordinances, because as of March 2nd, the regulations went into effect, and to give you sort of a shorthand way, the new regulations have changed sort of the overriding view that we have with regard to stormwater management. Basically, what our rules and our requirements are with regard to stormwater management is to make it a little more decentralized, and in a sense, mimic or mirror the natural water cycle, the rain cycle we see, instead of like transporting large portions of water off-site and getting them to a river, to instead, design our stormwater management so that it's more localized, you're talking about percolation more into the soils, again, mirroring more what the natural water cycle is, and I'm sure Ed, his group have, will probably be providing us with recommendations, turning rain gardens, that types of things, so that instead of having large sheet removal of stormwater, we try to keep it on site.
Yeah, that's correct, in the past, it was always just to get the water off the site and into the storm sewers, and more and more, they've encouraged infiltration, getting the water back into the ground, and, or at least filtering it properly before it goes, and if I'm not mistaken, the new stormwater rules are gonna require all developments, even redevelopments, to lower their impervious cover, as opposed to that, but this, the Environmental Commission is still looking at the changes in the new stormwater rules, and how it's gonna affect what we have to say about it.
Any thoughts, Jerry?
Yeah, I could add a little bit to that, we have dedicated staff here that have been following this now for quite some time, gentleman named Turner Schell, we used to work at DEP, also the county, he's heading that up, we have been keeping the borough up to date on everything that they need to do, including posting maps and things like that on the borough's website. Also, I think Ed mentioned FEMA, the borough has elected to be very aggressive with the FEMA categorization, and I believe we have a rating of six now, which is pretty good for a municipality of our size and our location. So the administration is pushing on the FEMA side as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the board members that haven't looked at the document, is that posted on the website, April, the EFI?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I would really encourage you to go take a look at it, it's really a nice piece of work, Ed, you and your commission should be very proud of that.
Yeah, the person who took lead on that, his name is Nozer Mehta, he lives on 16th Avenue, did a really tremendous job doing all the, laying out all the graphics and all that stuff, really, like I said, probably a year and a half of work, but Nozer was really the point man on that, so.
It shows.
And if anybody needs a copy, we could just get you your own digital copy for you to keep on your hard drive, or on a thumb drive, or whatever you like. to keep on your hard drive or on a thumb drive or whatever you like.
I certainly wouldn't mind having a copy. I don't know if I could copy it from the website, but maybe you can get that to April, Ed, which is for you.
I can, I have, I have emailed it to everybody. I can re-forward that email if you need me to.
There you go.
Good, good. All right. Thank you, Ed. Very informed.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, April, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, I just want to note first that Bill Lindsey has joined us.
Yes, he is.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
My apologies. I, I, I changed a, apparently I changed the password on a cell phone about two weeks ago. And it, and it carried forth to two lap, to two laptops and to two tablets that I have. And Zoom just had me install, reinstall everything. I apologize for the delay. I, I did get to see most of Mr. Lippincott's presentation, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Glad you made it.
Don't, don't ever change a password without thinking about it. Where else, where else it goes, right?
Yep, the pain of it. Next on the agenda was to be the oath of office for Sal Marchesi. A couple of comments. Due to some personal reasons, Sal will be unable to continue as a member of the planning board.
Here.
I want to, I want to first thank him for the time and commitment he's given to the board over the years. And I'd also ask the board members to keep him in your prayers. He's got, he's got a personal fight going on, and he could really use our support. So if you don't mind, you know, keep him in your prayers, and let's, let's hope for the best for Sal. But once again, thank you, Sal, for your commitment.
God bless you, Sal.
Uh, next up, can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
All right, Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Fire?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Protonentes?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have one application on the docket this evening, that of John and Jacqueline Cammidge. April, if you would please bring them into the meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, because my sister was noticed, she lives within the two-hundred-foot radius of the applicant. I'm going to recuse myself on this application.
All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, I see Barry is on John and Mr. DeFaco, correct?
Yes.
And I guess we should start with John and swearing in the witnesses, and we could go from there.
John, if you could bring everybody forward, so we can spare everybody all at once, if that's convenient. If not, we can swear them in individually before they testify. What's your pleasure? John, I think you're still on mute.
Please, look. Is there anyone else that needs to be brought up?
Are the homeowners testifying in any way, John? We might have to go to nodding with you, John. We're not getting any verbal.
It's just the three of us.
Okay.
John, you're still on mute.
I'm on now.
Yeah.
It's all right.
And I have a question with us. John, can you hear us?
My apologies. I was slow on the button there.
So just to confirm what April said, there's only going to be two witnesses this evening?
That's correct.
Gentlemen, may I ask you to, you saw me swear or affirm the testimony you gave before it would be the truth of the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. DeFaco's up also.
I didn't hear Mr. DeFaco.
Yes, okay. So the witnesses are sworn.
I don't really look like this either. The camera's blacky, so.
I know. You, you, you look wonderful.
Yeah, you look great.
Just, just by way of background, if I can, so I can get out of the way of your application, Mr. Holmbeck. And we agree to mark the development application plus the checklist of eleven pages as A one?
Correct.
Can we mark the, I guess, the permit, the minor land use zoning permit inclusive of the Nile as A two? That's dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. If I didn't put it on the record, I believe the application was a date of January fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one. The subdivision plat marked as A three, and note that subdivision plat includes divinity, property owners within two hundred feet, existing conditions and demolition plan, the minor subdivision plan, the key slash zoning map, general notes, R seventy-five zoning criteria, planting detail, sidewalk detail, concrete apron section, vertical per, uh, paver detail, all prepared on the minor subdivision plat, marked seafown, Lakeland survey, date of February third, two thousand and twenty-one, and mark that as A three. A four, we received a document. I guess we may have to cover this a little more in detail on this document, maybe a little voir dire. This is a document that appears to be hand-marked, concerning, it's identified as minor subdivision plat for this parcel. It appears to be a document wherein there is a marked up undersized corner lots, undersized interior lots, and then lots of fifty feet wide. And I, we'll get to this as to whether or not this was available to the public ten days before. If not, we can cover it by way of voir dire, I believe. A five is a survey of the property aired in Lakeland survey, January twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-one, again, marked seafown, marked that as A five. And I believe the applicant has received, if not, let me know, the review of our consulting engineer dated March fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, over the signature of Mr. Frida and also Ms. Bell, will mark that as P B for Planning Board One.
That has been received.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the documents that I have received for your application this evening. If there's anything else, please let me know so that we can mark it, even if it comes up in the middle. But right now, we have A through, A one through A five and T B one. Anything else, Mr. Holmbeck?
No, that's, that's the complete set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Holmbeck, I know Mr. DeFaco has been before this board before, but if we could get the benefit of his credentials as a matter of record, I would appreciate it.
I was, I was wondering how the board was going to treat that, because I know he's been here once or twice, but.
Yes.
There's no, no harm in, in doing it again. Rich, can you briefly give us your professional C V and your experience in testifying before this board and other boards, if you would, please?
Certainly. Licensed engineer since nineteen seventy-seven, planner since nineteen eighty-one. I own J K R Engineering. We prepared probably fifty-plus site plans and subdivisions before the Belmar Board since nineteen, I think nineteen ninety-two was the first one we did in Belmar. So a good twenty to thirty years of experience here. We work in Monmouth County primarily, also Ocean County. We work for private developers, not for municipalities, so we're a private engineering firm. And I've testified before the Supreme Court, Monmouth County, as well as zoning boards, planning boards in your town, and pretty much every town in Monmouth County since we started work.
Thank you, Mr. DeFaco. We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Just a moment. Is the expertise that you're offering which area or both? Is that planning?
Both, in both, planning and engineering.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kovacs, would you, um, would this be an appropriate time for Rich to, to speak to A four, since we're going to be talking about that? We were talking about having a voir dire, the person who created that.
Oh, yes. I guess my question is, was that available to folks ten days before this meeting?
Uh, that was sent to, uh, the clerk. I don't have the date in front of me. Barry or Rich, you recall?
So, no, it's not ten days, no.
Okay. Can you just briefly walk us through as to how that was created, by whom, and what it intends to represent?
Yes, and basically, it, it is your tax map that is copied on that sheet. So there's no new information here. And all I did was look at the tax map sheet and identify on that piece of visuals which lots are undersized, which lots are fifty feet wide, and which lots are corner lots. So it was more of visual to help you, because I could just explain it if you looked at the sheets of the tax map of the borough records, which is a public document, between, between Eighth Street and Twelfth. Yeah, from Eighth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue, and from A to C, you'll see a block pretty much, and our site is in the center of that block. And I can describe to you what I've noticed on the tax map. But that is what I did on A four, if you want to call it A four. It's a, it's the copy of the borough's tax map with just highlighted colors to indicate the size and shapes of existing lots.
Just in the creation of this document, did you, did you physically walk the areas to confirm the information that you've identified? Because I, and my difficulty is, it's, again, your eyesight may be much better than mine, Mr. DeFaco, but it's difficult to get sizes of lots. And you've, you've indicated that there's undersized corner lots, there's undersized interior lots. Were you, in the original document, to have?
Yes, the original tax map.
Block hearing, okay.
The original tax map is labeled clearly, for instance, fifty feet by one hundred feet. So that would be a five thousand square foot lot. And every lot labeled on the tax map clearly with dimensions.
Okay. Did you do anything to physically go out and confirm those dimensions?
No, it was all checked with the tax map and the aerial photograph, like from Google, with no physical onsite measurements were taken.
Okay.
I feel confident.
So taking, so taking the, so taking the information on the tax map as being accurate, you then developed this yourself?
That is correct. I believe the tax is accurate.
That covers all the questions I have. I don't know if there are any other questions by any other members of the board, but I think in terms of it being eligible and being relevant for your hearing, I think it passes those tests at certain ease and dimension.
Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. Rich, if I could start you out with your observation of the current structure that's on this lot, that you investigated and learned about as part of your work on this application? If you could give the board an overview of what you found there in terms of its use, in terms of its, of the building's location on the property, and any other aspects of it that you find important?
Okay, so Lot ten, existing Lot ten, in present condition, is a ten thousand square foot lot, and contains a two-and-a-half-story, eight-bedroom, non-conforming, multifamily use. So right off the bat, we have a nonconformity in the way that the property is being alive. Number two, the dwelling is two-point-one-foot setback from B Street, thirteen-point-nine-foot rear yard, and the front porch on Eleventh Avenue measuring ten feet to the right-of-way line. So there's, there's three setback variations that exist on the site. The lot is over the lot coverage requirements of the boroughs. It's at fifty-three-point-seven percent lot coverage, where forty percent is maximum allowable. The building coverage is over the maximum allowable at twenty-eight-point-six percent, where only twenty percent is allowable. The house and the outdoor pool are in state of severe disrepair. While the onsite parking provides three spaces, it is nonconforming in width. Maximum by code is ten feet for driveway. Parking stall sizes are substandard, being only thirteen feet by eight feet, causing parking to be partially within the borough's right-of-way when a car parks on the existing parking area. Onsite parking technically meets the code of three spaces for three or more bedrooms, but there's eight bedrooms here, and I feel that it's inadequate parking for eight bedrooms. So we have a eight-bedroom, nonconforming use. We have three setback variances, lot coverage, building coverage, and parking not really proposed, only the existing condition. John, that's what I saw as existing condition.
Thank you. The dimension of this lot appears to my unprofessional eye to be shorter than the other lots on this block. Can you explain to the board if that's true, and if it is true, how did that occur?
Well, if you wanted to look at, well, I could tell you about Exhibit Eight Four, but over, over time, most of the lots within a three-by-four block area of our site are only fifty feet wide, and, and more than half of them are only one hundred feet deep. So there are thirty-eight corner lots within the blocks between, can't get my exact number here, go on. There's thirty-eight corner lots between A Street and C Street, and from Twelfth Avenue to Ninth Avenue. Of those thirty-eight lots existing, twenty are five thousand square feet. That's fifty-three percent of the lots. Thirty-five are fifty feet wide. That's ninety-two percent of the lots, our corner lots being only fifty feet wide. And the four lots adjacent to our site to the north are five thousand square feet. Of course, the street, the southwest corner is also a five thousand square foot, fifty-foot wide corner lot. So those historically, the side streets turn the two mid-block lots facing the header street, the, the, the A, which resulted in the corner lot remaining on the middle streets being only a hundred feet deep. And that happens historically throughout the R seventy-five zone. Having ninety-two percent of the lots in that zone only being fifty feet wide, and the ordinance says you need to be six, whatever it is, sixty or seventy.
Sixty square feet.
Hey, there are no lots really that comply with that, except eight percent of them. So it's really not a typical thing. It's typical that they don't comply.
And the lots on the, in the middle of the block are, they appear to be longer, they're...
Right, they're one-fifty, one-fifty deep, by fifty feet wide.
And it seems that the development of these, uh, single-family homes on what I'll call the cross streets creates an issue on these corner lots that makes them uniquely different for that part of the neighborhood, correct?
That's correct. They don't have the depth that these mid-block lots have.
And A four shows us the significant number of these, sort of unusually short lots in, in, in the neighborhood, correct?
Correct. And the numbers I gave you are just the three blocks, A, A Street, B Street, C Street, and then from Ninth to Twelfth. The map shows you additional blocks in the, in the area beyond that, close proximity. But the close proximity to our lot, which is at B and Eleventh, is thirty-eight, thirty-eight corner lots that are basically studied in that, the A four, that show that more than half of them are five thousand square feet, and ninety-two percent of them are fifty feet wide.
So the subdivision of this lot into two fifty-foot frontage lots would, in essence, in terms of lot width anyway, be consistent with the width of the lots throughout this neighborhood?
I, I believe so. That's a yes to that question. Most of all lots are fifty feet wide in the R seventy-five zone. Most of all lots are 50 feet wide in the R-75 zone.
And this subdivision would create two single-family residents as opposed to a nonconforming, multifamily building that's on the property now, correct?
That's also correct.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review the March 5th letter from the Borough's engineer with respect to this application?
I did, yes.
So if I turn to the engineer's section two, he points out that this application would require a variance for lot size, correct?
That is correct.
And given the inherent shortness, the current shape of this lot, in a 50-foot, with two 50-foot frontage lots, there's really no way to get to the 7,500 square feet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And with respect to the corner lot, if we can't get to 75, we probably can't get to 9,000 either, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, but if, as I looked at this, I thought that if the rest of the block has 50-foot frontages, how would it be possible for someone to end up with a 9,000 square foot lot? And keep, without shorting some other lot?
There's no way to do it on one lot in his zone. Unless you have historically a lot that was larger, and there aren't that many in the zone. There are some, but there are far and few between that are at zoning dimensions.
And according to A4, you've noted that generally the solution was to have two 50-foot lots that are slightly undersized.
That's correct.
The corner lot would normally be seen to have two front yards, correct?
That falls as correct, yes.
So the applicant seeking a variance on the, on one of those front yards, the front yard that would border B Street, correct?
Yeah.
So in order for the two homes to sit there and to have appropriate driveways on this uniquely shaped lot, it would be appropriate, in your view, that a variance for the side yard or that front yard setback that would be considered a side yard setback be granted?
Well, yes, and just one thing to clarify for the board's consideration. The Borough's ordinance has a lot setback provision where an adjacent house, if it's closer to the right-of-way than your house, you can utilize the setback of the neighbor's house or your house so that they line up. I spoke to Ted about that. And the neighbor to the north of us, Lot Number 9, his home is about five or six feet from the right-of-way line. So our proposal for 15 feet is an extra 10 feet back from the neighbor's house. So while under one code, the 20-foot is required for setback under provision of the ordinance with the neighbor's house, and I would say that would eliminate the need for a variance. There are two ways to look at it, but I think if you look at it, as Ted and I discussed, we do not need that variance since the neighbor's home is closer than our home would be. Mr. Faulkner, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, 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 but I'll clarify on cross-examination.
With respect to the rear yard setback, the applicant seeking a variance from the 40-foot requirement in this district to 30 feet, correct?
That's correct.
And compared to the existing setback that's there, how does this compare actually?
Existing building is 13.9 feet, so we're more than doubling the setback. Although it's extended, it's a lot further from the northerly property line than the 13.9 feet. And one important thing to keep in mind is that our lot coverage is in compliance with the code. So one of the key things that I think is important for development is that if your lot coverage is in compliance, you're not pushing the envelope. I mean, your building may be over, and we're over on building coverage, but overall, the impervious and the pavers and the buildings is in compliance. So for the R-75 zone, we are in compliance with lot coverage, which affects your runoff and your drainage and things like that.
Now that I want to jump ahead, but since you did mention pavers, these are impervious pavers that we're talking about here?
Yes, they would be.
Thank you. The applicant also seeks a variance for a lot, for a minimum lot shape diameter. And I believe that's a function of the size of the corner lot, correct?
Yeah, but that is also based upon the 20-foot setback.
Right.
If we were to, for instance, say that we used a 6-foot setback of the neighbor's home, then we would comply with the circle, with the lot shape circle of diameter on our lot. But again, reading it right from the chart, we need a variance without applying that section of the ordinance about the front setback.
Okay. In terms of lot coverage, the applicant seeks 37%.
Building coverage is so, not lot, building.
I'm sorry, building coverage, my mistake.
Yeah.
Apologies. In terms of the size of the home, do you feel that they're appropriate for the size of the lot?
I do. And again, based on lot coverage, we meet the code on that. The lot meets FAR. We're not seeking FAR variance. But we have a covered porch, and we have a shed. Those things add a few percentage points to that number. If we had no porch and no shed, we'd beat down it around 30, I think 34% and change. And we're allowed 30%. So it's not a tremendous jump from what allowed, mainly due to the shorter, again, the 100-foot depth and the 5,000 square feet we're dividing by. Smaller numbers, they're getting larger percentages. But we have bigger setbacks in the rear. We comply with lot coverage. So the building coverage is really a function of the smaller lot area for the house that's typical to the zone, typical to the street. The house is not oversized for the zone or the neighborhood. But when you do the math and divide it by 5,000, it appears that the percentage exceeds the 30% by 7%.
Thank you. Could you speak for a moment about how the development of the two homes will change the parking from its current format to its new format?
The parking would be three parking spaces per dwelling, a total of six parking spaces. The parking on Street would basically, I think, almost increase by a space. Typically, on 11th Avenue, you have 50-foot lots, and everyone has a driveway. And on most cases, there's two parking spaces between each neighbor's driveway. So similarly, on our 11th Avenue site, we would have the driveway and on the Eastery lot, and two parking spaces in front of the Eastery lot. And on the Westery lot, there are no driveways, since that's always proposed on B Street. We would have two parking spaces at the west end of 11th Avenue at the corner, just west of that other lot. On B Street, the driveway now has a 24-foot curb opening, and that would be reduced to 12-foot, which would, right now, there's four large parking spaces. I doubt it's five. It's like, you can probably get four SUVs there. But I'm very hesitant, we're increasing that length by another 12, 13 feet. So you might get an empty spot on B Street by us narrowing the driveway to a single entrance driveway rather than the wide three-car entrance they have today. So we'll have six off-street parking spaces and either even or up one on street parking after we're done. We're not going to lose any parking spaces on the street. We may gain one on B. There's pencil parks there, a small park, a large park, but there's going to be extra room on B Street. And I still believe there'll be four on 11th. So they'll have adequate parking, they'll have off-street parking with maybe an increase of, but meet the code in either case. The variation we're seeking on lot on the corner is that the driveway width is more than 10 feet wide. We come in at 10, and we clear out to 18 to provide three onsite parking spaces. Now, so parking, the neighborhood is typically loaded with wide driveways. On our street, 208 and 206, 11th Avenue have extra wide driveways. Of course, the street on 11th at 217, 215, 211, 209, 205, and 207, those have extra wide driveways across the street from our site. On B Street, Lot 1, Lot 102, and Lot 7, Lot 101, which is down near the corner of 10th, those have extra wide driveways, but they're on B Street, right up the street from us on B. So there's, you know, a dozen homes within 300 feet of us that have extra wide driveways. The neighborhood is typically extra wide driveways and equally amount of 10-foot driveways. So we have one lot of 10, and one we have one block, which is water, which is pretty much typical what the neighborhood's showing us. 50% of them are complying, 50% of them are not complying.
Thank you. And with respect to the site triangle referenced in the engineer's report, have you had a chance to look at that corner? And can you tell us how that concern could be addressed?
Yes. B Street is one way to the south. And as you exit B Street, there's a stop sign before you cross over 11th. And 11th is a two-way street with a stop sign at B. So as you cross, it's like a four-way stop sign there. So the ordinance requires a 25-foot by 25-foot site triangle. In our instance, the stop bar on B Street is located behind a crosswalk, which is a good 20 feet back from the curb line. I believe that if we apply the ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Official Handbook, Design Standard, which is used by DOT and all of the highway development, which provides for a minimum of 15 feet back from a curb line and 10 times the speed limit on the other street, they would provide a site triangle of 15 by 250 as opposed to the 25 by 25 site triangle from the 19.20 when they made these codes. The adequacy of that is actual sight line. You see the car, give you enough time, 250 feet to see it, not just 25 feet to see it. That would apply in both directions on B Street. Would not affect the request for a 15-foot yard setback over B or the front porch, which would be called 11th. That site triangle would fall within the grass area at the corner and not be impacted by the new dwelling, but would provide adequate site triangle in both directions. For the people on 11th, they'll be up B, and the people on B, they'll be eastally on 11th before they cross over. So we could provide that, and I think that would be sufficient.
Thank you. The applicant seeks a waiver for the environmental, stormwater, and traffic reports. Do you have an opinion on why those waivers should be granted?
First of all, I think the minor, I don't think they're on the minor subdivision checklist. I could be wrong, but I don't think they would require.
I believe they are, just by way of pointing out. I looked at the checklist, I believe they are.
For the minor, okay. Well, environmentally, the site's already developed. It's got a home, it's got impervious, it's got development. There's nothing, I'd say, environmentally sensitive here. It's a developed lot in the middle of a developed neighborhood. There's no endangerment of vegetation or species on the property. So from the environmental point of view, I think getting rid of the older home with the older heating system and the older materials would be advantageous. Including a new, up-to-date, modern, clean, energy-efficient heating system and materials on the site would be advantageous. We do meet the storage drainage. We're meeting lot coverage requirements. There are storm drains in the road right in front of the property on B Street. There's no significant change in the amount of drainage leaving the property after development. And as far as traffic, it's owned for our set, it's owned for residential. Right now, there's eight bedrooms on the site. We're going to have eight bedrooms to work on. We're going to generate about the same number of trip movements with a population of eight bedrooms on the site now and eight bedrooms after. So I don't think there's any major change in traffic. We have a stop intersection, we've added off-street parking. We're now, there's not off-street parking, in my opinion. And I think there's no impact on traffic, environmental or drainage. That's the reason for the waiver request.
Okay. So in total, is it your opinion that the the shape of this lot creates a hardship, especially on the corner, that would require the board to issue a variance that we've talked about and allow the subdivision of this in order to properly develop this property?
I believe so. I believe that the 50-foot is common of the area, common of the zone, and the width of the lot is typical. And we're seeking a variance for being typical.
And do you believe that the plan, as shown by the applicant, is an improvement over what is there now?
I believe eliminating the nonconforming use is a major improvement in western app. Having two single-family dwellings is a better zoning alternative than having a nonconforming use, multifamily use in a residential home.
And the construction of two single-family homes on 50-foot fronts would be consistent with the overall plan in this neighborhood?
Yes, it is, based on what A4 exhibit shows and what I described on the three-block by four-block area around our property.
As a result of the unique shape of this property, in your opinion, would it be possible to have a 9,000-square-foot corner lot and develop this?
No, it would not be possible.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Faulkner.
Okay. Is Barry, Depeck going to testify, or is he representing owners?
Uh, yes, Barry would be my next witness.
Yeah, we'll bring questions to Mr. DeFaucon again.
All right. I didn't know what your pleasure was.
Fair enough.
Mr. Depeck, you are one of the principals of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
And can you give the board an overview of what you see on the property now?
Yeah, I'd like to just reiterate a couple of the key points that Rich and John had expressed earlier and maybe give you some of the insights that I've had just from, obviously, doing development in town over the last 20 years or so, what I'm seeing along 11th Avenue, and what we're trying to accomplish at this location. Obviously, the biggest issue here is.
Jay to the, Jay, just on a point, Jay?
Yeah.
Are you testifying as an expert, Mr. Depeck?
I'm testifying as the applicant.
Okay. Again, I mean.
Okay.
Want to have someone qualify you as an expert. I'm not going to oppose that, that's the chair's call. But if you're not testifying as to a fact of opinions as to what you're seeing, I want to make sure that this record is clear that at this point in time, you've not been qualified as an expert. Generally, rule of thumb, Doug Kovats' rule of thumb. If you're given opinions, you're an expert.
Right.
Qualified.
Okay, well, let me... Let me clarify.
Qualify me, please.
Mr. DePeppe, what was your occupation?
Real estate development.
And how long have you been in that profession?
30 years.
Wow. And have you developed other properties in Belmar?
Yes, I have. My partner, Sonny Lorin, and I have developed properties since 2001, I believe. We may have actually started in late 1990s.
So when you look at a potential project, you look at it through the lens of your expertise as a developer and with your knowledge of the construction industry, correct?
Correct.
So when you offer an opinion on, say, the state of the house or the condition of the house, that's based on your large experience in this area?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Kovats, is that sufficient for you?
Have you ever qualified as an expert before, Mr. DePeppe?
No, I have not.
Okay. It sounds to me as though you're testifying as to your expertise of development in Belmar as a developer opposed to, let's make it a minimum of 20 years in Belmar, developing properties in Belmar. Does this include residential properties?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I think he would qualify, depending on what the chair's pleasure is, as an expert, as a developer of properties in and about Belmar in the past 20 years.
I agree. I think he qualifies for that. You can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when you came to see this property, what was your opinion of the current structure and the current use of property?
The current use is a mixed use. There are apartments in there. As Richie said, there's eight bedrooms. We know for certain that there's at least two tenants plus the homeowner, the resident. The property itself is in complete disrepair. The house has a multitude of structural problems as well as asbestos and some mold mitigation is necessary. The in-ground swimming pool is inoperable. Essentially, everything is a demo at this point on the property. The present owners cannot make the necessary capital investment to upkeep, remodel, or improve the existing property. So, you know...
So the property seems to have other days.
This property, the best days are in its rearview mirror at this point, yes. What I'd like to talk about though is you've all are familiar with what I've done on Main Street. But when we first came to Belmar years ago, we did the redevelopment of Belmar Playland on Ocean Avenue. We did the redevelopment of the Reggie's Bar and Andy's Pizza at 12th Avenue. And from those investments and from that redevelopment work, Ocean Avenue changed to a single-family stretch rather than a mixed commercial and different things were there. And that was an objective of the governing body at the time. And then what we see from that is there's a reinvestment by the neighborhood, by the neighbors. Once they see what's happened on the oceanfront, things start to extend further west. Reinvestment, reconstruction, remodeling, different things. But there's a... There's some vibrancy that happens around these redevelopments. So we all know what happens on Ocean Avenue already. That's transpired in the last 10 to 12 years, including right at Ocean Avenue, 11th Avenue, where the Wallisford brothers developed the properties on Ocean Avenue. What we're seeing now is 11th Avenue is a little bit of a... Seeing a little bit of a lag. There is some reinvestment happening by homeowners, some remodeling work. There were some renovations and newer construction done probably five or six years ago. But there's been a stall or delay, really. So when I came to this piece and understood the dilemma that the property owner had and couldn't do the upkeep, we looked at this and said, this is an opportunity now to create a link for the stretch of 11th Avenue. You know, Ocean Avenue and the A Block, they're kind of a no-brainer. People are going to make those investments. But you want to try to get reinvestment and some newer remodeling, even if people just upgrade their front porches and put new railings on, paint their front door, put new awnings on. There's a pride of ownership that happens on that block. This second avenue at B Street could create a really nice link to what's already happened up at the oceanfront and start to extend that vote of confidence, if you will, a real... It's a positive driver, the way I look at it, to start to extend maybe back as far as C Street and reinforce some more investment by the neighbors. Lastly, I would just note that my partner and I are contract purchasers for the Yashiva property at 503 and 505, 11th Avenue, which is five blocks in on 11th Avenue. That property will get demolished later this year and two new single-family homes will get developed at the 500 block on 11th Avenue. So you can see that there's an opportunity now. If we can make a connection here at the corner of B Street, maybe there's some opportunity to link that even further west along 11th Avenue and try to improve the whole stretch of 11th Avenue. And that's really the motivation that we've had when we started looking at this property.
As a developer, have you taken note of how the corner properties in this area of town have been developed?
Yes. I looked at the tax map plan. Richie and I worked on that together. One of the interesting things that I've noticed also is that, as Richie said, 90-some-odd percent of the corner lots are 50-foot wide. Your avenues and streets, the grid system that you have for your roadways are 500 feet long. So if you have 10, 50-foot-wide conforming lots, that's 500 feet. How do you get 60-foot corners at A and B? Physically, it doesn't exist within the dimensions of the block. So I think that's why you're seeing the 50-foot-wide corner lots throughout this entire area.
Not to bring up a source object, but you were an unsuccessful bidder on the Methodist church property, were you not?
Correct.
And if I... How was the corner treated on that application?
50 by 100-foot lots on the... Yeah, correct. In the 100-by-100-foot corner where the church is, they were subdivided into two 50-by-100-foot lots. And it had the same situation. The mid-block 50-foot-wide lot, which the pastor retains, so you already have a pre-existing situation where you only have a 100-foot lot depth.
Okay. And in your opinion, the development of two new single-family homes is a vast improvement over what is on this lot right now, correct?
Without question, yeah. This property is just going to continue to go in further disrepair.
And the development is, in your opinion, consistent with the neighborhood?
Absolutely. It'll be identical to the two homes directly across 11th Avenue, 50-foot-wide lots.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. DePeppe.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Jerry, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Doug, we'll start with you. Any questions? Then we'll go to Jerry, and then we'll roll through the board.
Okay. Let me start with... Just to confirm, there are no other additional exhibits, no other additional testimony to tell them?
No, sir.
Okay. I want to go back to Mr. DeFauca. With regard to your review of the property as it presently exists, 100-by-100-foot lot, that clearly allows you to develop a 9,000-square-foot lot, correct?
Are you... There's some noise between that. Please repeat that.
With regard to the property as it is presently configured, it is possible, under the R-75 zone, to develop the parcel with a single-family residential home, which is conforming to the corner lot requirements.
That's correct.
I mean, you'd have to demo everything and those kinds of things. But it actually exceeds the corner lot requirements by... Was it a feet?
Right.
Right. Here's what I'm struggling with on behalf of the board. You're proceeding with a hardship variance?
Correct. That's the way, you know, John had set up the C1 ratio.
As to who's doing it or not?
Whoever, yes.
That's generally...
The testimony was in support of a C1 variance.
Okay. And that's usually something that's unique to that particular parcel that precludes you from developing it within the zone criteria, correct?
Yes.
And with regard to R4, I believe your testimony as to why it qualified for the hardship variance because the 50-foot width of a lot was common for the area and was common for the zone. Did I make that correct? Did you say that correctly? Did I repeat that correctly?
Yes, the 50-foot corner lot and the 50-foot width of any lot in that zone is primarily typical for those... That R-75 zone has 50-foot lot lots, correct?
And in fact, even at the block that you're talking about, 101, it's really not the width of the rest of the interior lots that's the issue. Most of them are 50-foot in width. But it's the depth. It's the 150 feet that they have that your lot doesn't have, correct?
Correct.
And that's how they get to the 75 or 7,500-square-foot area, correct?
On all of the corner lots, correct.
Exactly. I'm confining it to the interior lots.
Correct.
And as I look... With regard to this particular site, Lot 10, did you have an opportunity to look at the history of how this lot was developed?
I did not.
Okay. As I look at it, and you're absolutely correct that there are certain non-conformities, but is it true that with regard to the development of a site like this, because you have to have technically two front yards, in this instance, on 11th and B, at some point, you designate something as a... Is that correct?
Something as a rear yard.
As a rear yard.
Yes. Yeah, the house fronting on 11th would mean the rear yard is the north side.
Right. You know, because that's usually one of the greatest depths. When you take away, it's got two side yards in a sense. If you looked at 11th and the northern side yard, probably the way this was developed was an eye towards leading the east side yard as the rear yard, correct? For you subdividing the parcel, where does hardship come in?
The lot is only 100 feet deep, yet every other house has 50-foot frontage. So by matching the homes across the street on 11th, they're all 50 feet wide. We don't know how deep the house is by standing in the street. So by looking at the road, every house is 50 feet apart. We want the same as those across the street, 50-foot wide. The fact that our lot happens to be short because the side street of P many years ago cut it off. And yet, we still comply with lot coverage, increase the setbacks. I don't think we need a variance on the setback on B Street. We'll get into that later, I'm sure. But the variance request is to put in homes that appear from the street every other home with the right setback, with the right size of a home. And the 50-foot is typical of the neighborhood. I don't think we're varying yet. By having only 50 feet wide, which is kind of a given, now the depth determines our area. So by only being 100 feet deep, we're locked into 5,000 feet. If we had 120, we'd be locked into, whatever the number is, 6,000 square feet. If that house was on a bigger lot, we'd have bigger lots. If it was on an 8,000-foot lot, we'd be asking for 4,000 lots. At a certain point, it gets to be, you know, too crowded for the lot. But at 100 feet deep, we're matching, you know, half the lots in that zone, which I explained, 52% of them are 500-by-100-foot lots on the corner.
I'm trying to get the hardship because you've got 9,000 square feet.
Correct, but the hardship is the depth of the lot. We're left with a 100-foot-deep lot. We know the width is also non-conforming, but it's typical of the area being 100 feet wide. We don't have a 100-and-a-half-foot-wide lot. There isn't any 100-and-a-half-foot-wide lots anywhere in that zone. So zoning calls for a 60-foot corner lot. Nobody has a 60-foot corner lot. I should say nobody. 8% of the people do. 92% of them don't. That's just a historical thing. That grid from the old ocean view map, whatever it's called, they're all laid out at 50 feet wide, the whole part of Belmar, 50-foot-wide lots. The variance on our hardship is 100-foot depth is existing, what we have to work with. That's the hardship.
And I guess, again, I'm trying to make sure we don't mix concepts as the C2 and C1. Without your... I think you answered it. You're saying it's a hardship because I want a subdivision. But if you don't get a subdivision, you don't have a hardship with building a conforming lot in the R-75 zone.
We don't have a hardship, but we have lots that are the same as every other lot in the neighborhood. So the hardship is that we want to be like... We want to be like what's already there. Why should we be correlative from being like everybody else is in that area? That's the hardship. It's already the lot.
And Rich?
The lots in that area are 50 by 100.
And Rich, you're eliminating a multifamily use and complying with the single-family zone.
Right, well, that's a benefit to the zone plan. Negative, positive, critical. As far as the hardship case goes, we have more than half the lots in that part of town are that size, and that's what we're seeking.
And I can see that going to a C2, not to a C1. Again, and I mean, you're the planner, Rich, and that's what I'm trying to work with here for the board. And I understand what Mr. DePeppe is paying in the case of a non-conforming use. But that non-conforming use is allowed to continue until, as the Supreme Court says, it withers and dies on the vine. If it withers and dying on the vine, we'd be able to have a nice, large-sized corner lot to preserve that R-75 corner. And that's what I'm grappling with and trying to present to the board. I'm assuming there's been no application that has been made for a rezoning? I don't know whether this is appropriate question for John or to the applicant. In this instance, there's been no application for that?
Doug, no.
Doug, can I ask a question? Was there any discussion?
I'm done with my questions. I'm done with my questions for Mr. DeFauca.
Just following up on Doug's question on the C1, the hardship.[1732.94] Was there any discussions with the property owner on Lot 9 about potentially acquiring that property?
Yes.
Could you elaborate, please?
There were some inquiries. I did it through the existing property owner and asked them, being that they're neighbor, and they said there was no interest at all. So I didn't do anything directly with the Lot 9 owner, but I did it through the existing homeowner.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Jerry, I'll turn to you. Any questions that you have before we roll to the board?
Oh, yes, thank you. I guess either Barry or Rich can answer this question, maybe. Are you planning basements for these buildings?
I can answer it, yeah. The existing residence has a basement, and there's a built-in swimming pool as well. So we've investigated that. We think we can do basements, yes.
I just wondered where the groundwork table was, if you do.
I won't know exactly until I do the demolition.
Okay. If groundwater is encountered as a condition, would you attempt to mitigate that on-site and not release it from the site?
If groundwater?
If you find a groundwater problem, you need sump pumps. Would you provide filtration on-site?
If I find a groundwater problem, I'll be building crawl spaces.
Okay. That's good to hear. My question now is a condition, if approved, if you would agree to, if you have to have sump pumps, that you infiltrate the flow from that sump pump into the... On the property and not release it off the property?
Rich, are we able to do that, some sort of recharge? I would agree to that.
Yeah, and as Barry said, though, if he's got water problems, he's going to be pumping the water from the basement to the side of the house, back to the basement again, and it'd be a vicious cycle. So we're thinking of crawl space.
Correct.
And that's fine, but that isn't always the case. You're digging it in the summertime, everything's fine. Then we get into rainy season, and now we have sump pumps kicking on, and we're dealing with the aftermath. So I'm just asking if you would consider that going forward?
I'd say yes to that question. If we do have to have sump pumps, it'll be discharged to the drywall system somewhere on the property.
Correct. That would be very helpful. And then you could have an overflow from there out to the street. But I just want to have some type of commitment from you guys on that because you're building two houses here. Okay? So that's important to us.
Question if I can add, Jerry? What's going on with the roof leaders?
Just going to get there.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
It ties right in with where you were going.
It sure does.
What we would propose to do is, under the paper driveway, put a recharge pipe with stone around it, and that would serve as the connection point for the front and the back of the house. And maybe run piping to catch the furthest corners and bring it back to this recharge area.
That would be a good solution.
Since the house has a basement, I believe the recharge system will be high enough away from any water table to function properly.
That would be an acceptable solution. Mr. Chair, are you okay with that?
Yeah, so we should make that a condition of the application.
Yes.
You okay with that, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Lastly, the variance situation for the front yard setback on B. You don't show us where the houses that you referred to, that's, I don't know, so many feet away.
Right, that's the neighborhood on 9th. That got brought up actually by Ted, because he said, "Don't you know that the house is real close to the road?" So I used the aerial photograph we have from near maps and from Google Maps and double-checked it. And the structure is... The curb line is 15 feet from the right-of-way line, and the house measures 21 or 22 feet. So that gives me about five or six feet from the right-of-way lines of the structure. That's existing dwelling. They have like a very small, four-foot open porch in the front of it, but the structure itself, the heated part of that house, is about six feet from the right-of-way line.
And you say that's on 9th Avenue?
No, that's on B Street.
Oh, it's on B?
It's on Lot 9. Lot 9, the house adjacent to the north of us.
Yep. Okay. I mean, it might have been helpful to have a plan of that. We showed the house next door on the east side.
Yeah.
Probably would have shown that. You know, as it is, I don't know if I would recommend the board not require that variance because I don't really have any proof that has to...
We asked for the variance in the zone chart. We still show 15 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, we'll roll to the board for questions, starting with Rick.
Okay, get myself off mute. I have no questions. I'll reserve my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Forte, you abstained. Recused yourself, rather. Mr. Lindsay, please. She's losing, you're still on mute.
How about now?
Yeah, you're good.
My general comment, obviously, Bellmore is tight, right? There's not a lot of room to build anything, so it's becoming apparent that larger lots being carved into smaller lots is a trend, and I understand that, right? I prefer the bigger lots, but that's my personal opinion. I didn't see any... Has there been any pushback from any of the residents who were notified being within 200 feet? Is there any concern from anybody who was notified about the pending application for that lot? The general neighbors there unconcerned based on sending out letters notifying them of the changes that are pending?
We may not know until we open to public, Mr. Lindsay.
Yeah, we'll open it to public. Mr. Lindsay, we'll find out right there.
But to date, nobody's pushed back and said, "What the hey, what the hey," right? Okay. Thank you.
It's not normally the course. Usually, we hear at the meeting.
I don't know. There's a lot of meetings that get contentious. Thank you, thank you. That's all the questions. I've scrutinized the details, and let's move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Ted, any questions?
Yeah, a couple. So I keep hearing that the existing house is a multifamily. How many families is the existing house? And Rick?
I'm sorry?
I keep hearing that the existing house is multifamily. How many families is the existing house?
To the best of our knowledge, there's the principal residence downstairs, and two tenants have occupied upstairs. I don't know if it's a rooming house or if it's a separate apartment, but two other tenants. So three users in this mixed-use building.
Is it actually listed as a mixed-use multifamily building or somebody just renting out rooms in a single-family home?
I believe the latter.
Okay. So just to confirm, the roof drains and anything coming out from sump pumps, if need be, they're all going to be maintained on the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If granted, would you be adding any trees to alongside B Street and 11th Avenue?
We would do typical foundation plantings along the front porches of both homes, as well as the side yard foundation plantings along B Street. I don't know what the opportunity is or whether that would become shade tree commission for street trees?
Shade tree, but I think that area over there has a wide enough path between the street and the sidewalk to put trees.
Are you thinking type of shade trees or more...
Shade trees, yeah. Either along B Street on the actual property on their side yard or along the front end side between the curb and the sidewalk.
Isn't that a shade tree commission? I mean, I'd be happy...
Correct, yeah, it is.
I'd be happy to... You know, in the past, the shade tree commission makes a recommendation, and then either we install the tree, which would, in this situation, I'd prefer to just install the tree with my landscape package. I have no objection to that in consultation with the shade tree commission. I don't want to make the decision and have the wrong type of tree there.
I got you, yeah. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, are you open to putting trees around the side of this 11th Avenue and B Street?
Yeah, I would think each 50-foot lot would probably have one tree along 11th Avenue, each lot. And then maybe you'd be able to get two along B Street on the corner lot. So probably four trees, that would be my thought.
Barry, just jump in real quick on that.
Subject to the utility pools.
Right. On 11th, there are two trees now. They can be replaced, but there are two trees on 11th. And on B Street, there is underground electric from the utility pole, which is between the curb and the sidewalk. I'm sorry, between the sidewalk and the property line. So the tree would have to go between the curb and the sidewalk, which is... And there's wires overhead, so it'd have to be a small...
That tip we did runs...
A small growing tree. Because you wouldn't want the tree to be up in the wires.
Or it'll uproot the sidewalk also at some point in time.
And we said, if I can, just to try to bring people to where I think they're agreeing, that you would abide by the shade tree commission's recommendations for plantings at the site? Make that a condition of approval?
Yes, I would.
Sounds good. I took a look, too. This is actually for Jerry Freda. On the paving detail, it doesn't seem that that is actually a permeable paver. And like the design and the installation of it doesn't seem to be like standard permeable design. Does the paver itself have to be rated as a permeable paver and listed?
We would make sure that the accordance to approval by Jerry that it would meet the code as far as what percentage is actual imperious, what percentage of the paver allows water to infiltrate. So there are products on the mark. We will certify that it is meeting the code of what is a permeable paver.
Okay, so you're going to change the pavement from what's on here? So you'll change everything from what's on here?
We would spec something that would meet Jerry's approval, yes.
Okay.
Richie, that would be done when we do plot plan applications and Abakia's office reviews the plot plans?
Well, we could do it now with the completion.
Okay.
And that would be a condition of the application.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ted. Tom, any questions?
Yes. So a couple things. One is, I am... I'm struggling with the hardship thing as well. And I guess I'd like to get some more clarity on that because it occurs to me that you're actually creating your own hardship by doing the subdivision. And I guess I'd like to understand a little bit better what the thought process is around the hardship.
Well, as an example, if this lot was 100 by 150, we still want to knock the house down and put two houses up. If this lot was 140 feet deep, we still want to knock the house down and put two houses up. The fact that it's only 100 feet deep, we still want to knock the house down and put two lots up. The hardship is the lot shape, the lot size. Taking away the non-conforming use is a benefit to the neighborhood. We want to get rid of the old house and put up two new houses. So the 50-foot width is the key. Everybody in that block's got 50 feet, and we want to put two houses up. The fact that it's only 100 feet deep was our hardship. We would knock down the house if it was 110, 120, 150 feet deep. It's what happens if it's only 100 feet deep. So we've improved the setbacks in the rear and in the front and the side, meet lot coverage. We don't have a far issue here. So I think it's a benefit in general. It's a hardship also. We want to improve the neighborhood. Go with C2.
Yeah, why wouldn't you just gone with C2? Because it sounds like most of your argument is we're bettering, you know, we're coming up with something that's better.
Yeah, well, you know, I could ask John another question.
I was concerned that the idea of a substantial benefit outweighing any detriment made that a hard go. And the unique shape of this lot fit into hardship, especially when you look at how the rest of the corners in this part of town are configured. I don't know if we want to move back to a C2 at this point or to proceed on both.
I don't think you're noticed for that, John.
No. Excuse me?
Be very, very clear as to what we're doing. I don't think...
I know, yeah.
I'm not trying to be...
No, no, I don't disagree with you. But I... Well, I talked to Barry and his professional. The unique shape of the lot, I would also fit into C1 better.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple other questions. So I'm looking at the subdivision plan, and I noticed that on the right-hand side where the new properties are, it still says slate walk down the left and along 11th Avenue. Are you intending to keep those sidewalks?
No, there's a note on the plan that says proposed white concrete sidewalk pointing to sidewalks in front of the site, so...
Okay, I do see... Yeah, I see that.
And that's on both the B... There's a label on B and there's a label on 11th that said that.
Okay. Or is that just a carry? Like a carry?
Both are new sidewalks running lot line to lot line on B and on 11th.
Great, thanks. And then one more question is, the... Will the two properties, the two homes that are built, are they identical or will they be identical floor plans? And will they have... Be visually different from the street?
They'll be different, Mr. DeFalco, to that question.
Two separate designs, different elevations, different floor plans. We haven't developed housing yet. Obviously, step one is to get the... Try to get the approval from you folks. But yeah, we would not build two of the identical homes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, Tom. I have a question for Mr. DeFalco. On the survey or site plan, existing versus proposed, you're calling out six-foot-high fence along the lot lines. Are you turning that fence and running along the side yard on B Street of Lot, proposed Lot 10.01? And is it running across the front of 11th, across both lots?
The proposal is to remove the existing fence, which is a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence, and to reinstall a new six-foot-high solid vinyl fence right out the property line. Presently, it's not exactly on the line. And then the line between the new Lot 10.01 and 10.02 would have also a six-foot-high fence. Yet, as you approach the front setback area, it would drop in height to three feet, to be code.
And where does it go out to?
I think we would stop it right at the front setback, Rich.
At the front of the porch or front setback line. I thought the porch might be a three-foot-high fence. And then, once you pass the porch, there'd be no fences.
Does that one being proposed?
Yeah.
And then there's nothing along B Street, correct?
No fence along B Street?
Not along B, no. But along the sideline between Lot 9 and Lot 10.01 and 10.02.
Okay. And then between the... What's that, Lot 11 as well on that side?
Lot 11 would have basically reinstalled... But anything within the front setback line would not be six feet high.
Okay.
Three feet high.
Jerry, I'd like to ask you a question in regard to the waivers. We heard Mr. DeFalco talk about why he feels those... The requirements should be waived, given the criteria laid out, environmental, traffic, and storm. Could you provide us with the benefit of your thoughts on those waivers?
Sure. I do agree with Mr. DeFalco's interpretations. Environmentally, traffic, both negligible at this point for this type of application. Stormwater, the site itself is less than a quarter acre. And they're actually meeting our lot coverage. So from that standpoint, and the fact that they have agreed the conditions to handle the roof runoff and that type of thing, I believe a waiver could be granted by the board if you wished.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If I could, just for clarifications on that, Jerry, I may or may not have to write this up. You're saying the concessions on the stormwater, and that goes back to the pump overflow drain as well as the... I get the perforated pipe under the driveway for the leaders?
Yes.
Okay.
Sort of like a reservoir.
I'm assuming that you want to see, Jerry, also, and again, since we're kind of meshing it together here, that you want to see performance guarantees for any placement of driveway area, sidewalk area, these kind of things?
Uh, yes, for sure. I mean, they're gonna have site inspections needed along the way. It will be brought in by the construction department when needed.
And you would be recommending that, uh, the, separate services be provided to each of the lots, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
That appears to be shown on the plans.
That, that's what I thought, and I, I wanted to make sure the, that our engineer was recommending the same.
Yep. Obviously, there'll be, uh, some connection fees involved with connecting into sanitary water line. And it looks like all the electric's gonna be underground, running around. John, if, if, if the variances are, uh, granted, uh, would you agree as a condition of the application that no additional variance will be granted uh, for this, uh, for this property, uh, should it move forward?
Um, Mr. DePape?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, there you go.
And, uh, next, uh, would you also make it a condition of the application that, uh, the project would be built within one year, uh, of receiving the approval? If such an approval were granted?
Um, clarify the term, the definition of the project, Jay. We would, we would complete the.
If I could, if I could, that you will, that you will begin to prosecute those aspects which require variance relief. I'm not asking you for a completion, but so.
Yeah.
Dan, and, and I say this, and John can clarify me if he has a different interpretation of our ordinances. But generally, with regard to perfecting your subdivision, you have time that you have to meet. That generally is much short of a year. So at least perfecting your subdivision, you have a timeline that's much shorter than a year. In terms of variance relief that you receive, that you have to take, have to take appropriate steps to demonstrate that you are prosecuting the scope of the work, to make sure that you preserved your right to a variance. And that means either, either the demoing and the filing of the maps, beginning to have those things. Board is not asking you to have the project built within one year. If, if as a result of a year later, we see that there's nothing to define that anything's happening on this property which preserves your variance relief, you may be obliged to restructure your process all over again.
I can agree to that, yes.
And John, John can provide you with additional clarification as to what he thinks you need to do to make sure that that's done. We just, we just wanna make sure that our applicants, if they are successful, don't stub their toes down the line.
I presume that you would add a condition that the existing building needs to be demolished in order to file the, the new plots for this?
I, I, I'm assuming you're going to have to because your.
Right.
Because your, your building right now traverses the lot line.
Right.
That you'd want those demoed. If there's something you want to preserve, let us know at this point in time, but I, I'm assuming you're gonna be doing.
No, I, I was just saying that, you know, sort of thinking out loud, that that demolition process is gonna occur relatively quickly, certainly within a year. I mean, in order for them to perfect their subdivision, that existing house has to go.
We can comply, we can, we can comply within one year, yes. We can comply, and I'm, I'm okay with that condition.
I'm gonna suggest to you, Mr. DePape, Michelle, your title company is gonna tell you how that's gonna go.
Uh, Mr. DeFalco, one question. I know there was a pretty lengthy discussion on the site triangle, um, and the adequacy of the, um, typical twenty-four foot or twenty-five foot. What, uh, what are we looking at in terms of a site triangle on this? And are you going to add that to the site plan?
Well, they had a site triangle and typically the ESHTO standard is a fifteen-foot depth measured from the curb line. On Eleventh Avenue, the right-of-way is twenty feet from the curb line. So in essence, the visibility is all within the town's right-of-way and not on the property per se. If you measure the, and again, I could discuss this with Jerry, but if you measure from the stop bar and not from the curb line, because somebody stops and then they edge up the C around any parked cars. You know, in reality, you're not gonna hit the gas thirty feet from the corner and just go. You're gonna pull up to the corner and look again and hope. So that's where the site triangle visibility actually comes into play. The sight line on the map doesn't really do anything for the driver.
I guess, I guess in an effort to, to bring consensus, Mr. DeFalco, to, to the chair's question, you're gonna, you're gonna supply us with the site triangle as to where you think it is.
I, Freddy is gonna review it, yes, and I think.
Very good.
Agreement, yes.
You'll come to a consensus.
I agree.
For some reason, there's some planting that has to be removed so that we don't have a site triangle issue. We'll take care of that, correct?
Correct.
Correct me.
Uh, one other question, Mr. DeFalco. There is a gray dotted line which ties into the inlet on B Street at the corner of B and Eleventh, which I'm assuming was the old storm tie into that inlet. Will that be, uh, completely demolished or will that inlet be repaired and sealed?
Well, the plan was, there's a note on my plan that it says roof drain connection tie into the distant garbage and rain system. So we were hard piping the roof drains into the town's system.
No, that's not what we discussed as a condition.
I know. Uh, Mr. Frida suggested infiltration, or I suggested it. So either way, we will address the roof drain system, either it's hard pipe or infiltrated. I, I think actual hard pipe is better.
I'm, I'm okay with that. The abandoned line, I'm assuming that you're gonna abandon, remove as part of demo and seal the inlet where the old storm lines used to tie in, correct?
And that's on my plan, a gray line?
Yeah, if you look at the inlet, it's got a great height of, looks like twelve point four or six on the corner. And you see a dotted gray line?
I think that's on the propos, that's on the proposed subdivision, Jay.
Yeah, on the proposed.
Yeah, we're gonna eliminate that and we're gonna do the onsite recharge. That, that, that line will be eliminated on our proposed plan.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Barry. Uh, one of the concerns, and this is not unusual for this particular proposed lot, ten point oh one and ten point oh two, is the paver area, the patio paver area adjacent to parking. And the concern is always, how do we prevent that becoming, from becoming parking spot number four in both of these lots? Um, because it'll be, it appears at least based on the graphic, that it'll be the same elevation. Uh, and therefore, very easy for someone to swing in and park there. Um, and we know how much parking is a premium in Belmar. How can we prevent that from occurring or the potential of that occurring? And I'm not sure how, I'm just posing the question. I wish I had the answer, but I don't.
I don't think that's the case on the interior a lot, if you look, that's almost an impossible turn, right? Around the corner.
Yeah, but we don't, we've seen, we've seen people pull that, so.
Do you really?
You'd be, you'd be surprised.
Yeah.
Barry, we could do a short railing of some sort, decorative fence, three-foot-high something, a column and some horse members just, just to limit eight or two.
I'd actually, it's simple as stepping that peter and turning it out.
I'd, I'd actually prefer to, I'd prefer to step at eight inches. I'd prefer to have it step up just eight inches.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the better application.
Right.
Yeah, I think it just, you know, it prevents that from potentially becoming an issue.
We'll, we'll show two different elevations at that location, a six, a six-inch or eight-inch step, six-inch step.
Okay. Uh, that's it for the questions for me. Uh, any other questions for the board before I open it up to public? Nope, seeing none, I'll open it to the public, April, if you don't mind. If you have a comment, please raise your hand. And April will bring you into the meeting. Please state your name, spell it, and provide your street address.
Linda Sharkeus, four hundred Fourth Avenue. Um, I'd like to just comment that I think it's a wonderful thing that Mr. DePape is interested in buying this significantly non-conforming use piece of property. Um, here in Belmar, we've been focusing on more family-friendly houses. So that application, if somebody were to come in, could turn into one more animal house, which we certainly don't want in the community. Um, and to Mr. DeFalco's point, there are more than, more short lots in Belmar than just that area he discussed. I live in one of those myself on Fourth Avenue, corner of Fourth and C. There's a house on C next to me is short, the one on Fourth next to me. The same thing across the street. So what Mr. DePape is suggesting is, um, not unusual in our town, and, and I think it would be a beautiful addition. And, and as I listened to Mr. DePape's comments, if the block's only five hundred feet, requiring an extra ten feet for a corner piece of property, we should probably reexamine zoning requirements if you can't get it without having another non-conforming lot within the block. That's what I'd like to say, and I, I hope the board, uh, supports this application.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much. Next, please. Anyone? Here we go.
Hi, my name's Stuplitz, had two seventeen Eleventh Avenue directly across from the western lot. Um, I had two questions. I think Mr. Cavalli answered one. Is the slate sidewalk going to be replaced on the western lot by B and Eleventh?
Yes.
Yes, it is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good, because the slate in the winter is really hard walk. The other thing is, um, I see you have underground electrical on the western lot, on the eastern lot. Where would the power be coming? From the power lines behind the house or across the street on Eleventh?
The power line it proposes to come from the pole on B, down the pole, under the ground, run from B around the corner, past the first house to the easterly lot, so.
Okay, so it will be underground lines?
Man from the pole on B all the way around the lot, yep.
Okay. And, um, is there any price proposal for these new houses yet?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a little early for that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stuplitz. Anyone else?
Uh, Eugene Kramer, uh, three eighteen Fourth Avenue.
Good evening, Eugene.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I just wanna mention, uh, according to the Belmar E R I, uh, the, the subject property is within the Silver Lake water shed. And actually, uh, I do have, uh, concerns about, uh, stormwater runoff. Um, looking at the subdivision plan, to the left of the title block is a cross-section of concrete paver installation. The note calls for unilock-type Camelot pavers. Uh, the Camelot, uh, is a nice cobblestone paver, but, uh, the Camelot isn't a permeable, permeable paver according to unilock. A unilock, I looked them up, uh, on the internet. Uh, unilock does manufacture pervious pavers, but, uh, Camelot is not one of them. Also, uh, uh, Belmar, chapter forty, uh, paragraph, uh, two point four defines impervious area and, uh, requires compliance with interlocking concrete paver institute, uh, technical specification number eighteen, to take any advantage of the so-called fifty percent credit. Um, and also, uh, the proposed, uh, paver, uh, cross-section does not comply with the technical specification number eighteen. I guess I have a question, uh, when you, uh, when I looked at the plans, uh, the zoning chart listed, um, lot coverage. Uh, but it did not, uh, list, uh, impervious coverage. Uh, am I supposed to assume they're both the same?
They should not. Have we a calculation for impervious coverage?
If, if you look at the engineer's letter, he does break out, um, building from lot coverage.
Okay.
I'm not sure, Eugene, whether you got a copy of that, but, uh, the engineer, our engineer's, uh, table on page, I don't even know which page this is, but page four.
It's three of seven.
Yeah, three of seven. So the lot coverage for Lot ten point oh one is forty-seven percent, whereas fifty-five percent is the requirement. And then Lot ten point oh two is fifty percent, whereas fifty-five percent is required for the building coverage. They're looking for a variance, they're at thirty-seven percent in both cases, uh, whereas thirty percent is, uh, the requirement. So they comply with lot coverage, Eugene, but certainly on the building coverage is, it's the, one of the variances they're looking for.
Yeah, okay, thank you, uh, I, I didn't see the engineer's letter. Um, I guess what, uh, the other question that I have, um, the area to be used for parking, um, is that considered impervious cover?
It is. That fifty percent using the pavers, that will be modified to meet the code to be permeable pavers.
Uh, yeah, I know, uh, but where you're parking automobiles, are you considering that with so-called permeable pavers? Uh, uh, to, to be impervious, uh, coverage?
Yes, that fifty percent credit for using permeable pavers.
And they are permitted where the cars are parking. Because keep in mind, that water will sheet across and under that car. So the permeable paves, paves, pavers will still do their job. It's just not direct rain hitting them.
Uh, yeah, that seems to be in conflict, uh, with the Burroughs, uh, definition of, uh, in chapter forty, uh, paragraph two point four. Uh, that seems to be in conflict with, uh, uh, the, the definition of, uh, being able, or I should say, being able to take fifty percent, uh, credit for the so-called permeable pavers.
They are going to change that spec, that was one of the conditions. So you're absolutely right. What's on here, the unilock Camelot is not permeable table. They will be coming back in and our engineer will be reviewing that to ensure it complies.
Well, according to the definition of, uh, impervious area, uh, it says all parking areas shall, impervious areas shall include all parking areas, automobile access driveways and storage areas, patios, walkways, et cetera. Um, gee, uh, you, you know, in, in town here, we get, uh, forty-eight inches of measurable precip, uh, per year. And, um, now, now we have a, a ten thousand square foot piece of property. And, uh, that, uh, precipitation that we get, that's all fresh water. And I guess the biggest, uh, concern here is, um, you know, how is that, that water handled on its way to Silver Lake? And, uh, we, we, uh, number one, by changing the zoning, uh, you go from, you know, R seventy-five zone, uh, maximum, I believe that allowable is, uh, uh, forty percent. Uh, now when you, when you change the zoning, uh, to, uh, five, you know, R, R fifty zone, um, the impervious, allowable impervious cover, I believe it goes up to 55%. Uh, so net overall, uh, I think we're going to, uh, you know, see, see water going where it wouldn't go naturally. And actually, uh, there's the opportunity here, uh, with the, a complete clean demolition, that, uh, that property, that property, uh, would, would be a, uh, uh, a, a, a piece of property that, uh, would, would be in its natural condition. So there's going to be an alteration to, uh, runoff and effects on Silver Lake. That's about it.
Thank you.
I might just jump in real quick, Mr. Kramer, just to let you know, the existing lot coverage is 5,374 square feet on the existing house. Proposed total is 4,854 square feet, which is 10% less impervious coverage after demolished than it is today. So I believe there's going to be a reduction in runoff, nothing. Just to hit numbers straight.
Yeah, okay, I, I guess you're trying to take credit for the sins of the past. You know, and, and, and by the way, uh, the, the borough did adopt a, uh, a, a stormwater ordinance to comply with the new regulations that just went into effect at the beginning of this month. And, uh, the intent there is, is to try to get back to the pre-developed, uh, runoff conditions. And I just don't see this development here as, uh, any, any step towards that.
Thank you, Eugene. The one thing I'll add is that they did agree as a condition to put in a recharge system below the driveway of both properties. All right, anyone else? From the public?
Whoever's still muted.
That's Stuart?
Yes, the store friend is on B Street between 10th and 11th.
Could you spell that for us, please?
S.T.E.W. Fernandez, F.E.R.N.A.M.D.E.Z.
Thank you.
Guys have a couple of questions, mainly the parking. I live on B, right across the street from this house.
Okay.
I think I have it right, there's going to be three parking spaces on each, on property?
Yes.
How, um, the corner lot, right now they have, it's a parking lot, you can really get two, two, two cars up there properly? How is the, I'm sorry, not looking at the plans, but how is the parking lot, parking space is going to be on the corner lot? Are they going to go behind the house, on the side of the house?
Yeah, they're going to be on the, they're going to be on the north side of that house, behind the house with a single driveway on B. Right now, there's a 24-foot wide, kind of a wide apron to get in there with three, two and a half, three cars can jam in there.
Yeah.
We're going to cut it back to only a one-car entrance and they're going to park three cars behind the house, nothing on the street like it is now hanging over the sidewall.
Can we pull that plan up, April? Is there any way we can pull that site plan up? You can give me permission, I, I can pull it up.
It could, um, that's not, not, it's not going to land much of a backyard. But, you know, it's almost as three, because we do have a severe parking problem with the, the house you're talking about that's right next to it. Um, we, we have about six cars, they have a long driveway, but there's six cars on the street at all times and the house right across, there are two rentals.
Can you see the screen?
Yeah, I can see the screen very well, yes.
So these are the three spots on B.
Ah.
Taking the double, the double curb cut to a single, bringing three in inside the property line, because right now they're so shallow, they're actually extending out into the right away.
Yeah, they agree. Okay.
This is three here and you can see on what's proposed lot 10.02, three in the side, uh, side yard, which is pretty typical.
Yes, I, I agree, ones and a miller, um, are like that. And you mentioned about the water drainage, sump pumps. We have a very severe water problem in our street. Um, it really, it called the water from 11th Avenue on B, um, right at that corner drains all the way, um, down to 10th Avenue and those bubblers, they can't handle it. So you said it, which is good, um, you know, if, if they need sump pumps or any type of drainage from the gutters is going to be, tried to be kept on the property, that would be great.
Yeah, and they've committed to recharge systems, pipe, basically stone pipe, uh, under the driveway to contain. And our engineer will take a look at that as part of their final design.
And there'll be new curbs put on B Street?
Only where, uh, they have to replace what was the, uh, the double cut. They'll put in a new curb and they'll put in a new, uh, new apron there.
Yeah, they're, they're in pretty bad shape, um, so I, I really, they need to be replaced. And also the sidewalks on B Street, there'll be new sidewalks, the slate will come out?
Yeah, we hit that one a couple of times, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The slate sidewalks come out as part of a condition and new concrete walks will be put in along 11th and along B.
Okay, no, uh, otherwise I'm, I'm okay with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
That was it.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks. I'm closing the public portion and I'm going to open it up to board comments. Uh, Mr. Lindsay, I'll start with you, please. You got to take yourself off of mute, Bill.
Uh, yeah, I, I, generally I, you know, as a citizen of Belmar, not a planning board member, you know, the, the constant reduction of, of, of various sites, it's, it's a personal point, like I, I just, I like the wider lots and, and I think many people feel that way, but I, I also see the, the value of, of getting rid of a, a non-conforming property in favor of two updated, completely conforming properties. Uh, at this particular point, I, I've seen no pushback from anybody who's, uh, would be immediately affected from around there. So I feel satisfied that any concerns I have have been satisfied.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Myers? You got to take yourself off of mute, Rick.
I just love to hear myself talk. Uh, I, I, you know, listening to, uh, all the questioning and I, I didn't feel like I needed to take part in that around the hardship piece of it. It was kind of amusing because I, I'm not really convinced that they made a case for hardship. With that said though, uh, and Mr. Lindsay touched on it, I mean, we're getting rid of a non-conforming use, um. I think the benefits probably outweigh the detriment, but I, I've, I've got to go on record to say I, I don't think they made a real good case for the hardship.
Yeah, thank you. Ted?
Um, I pretty much went over everything I need. Um, the property, like they're saying with the hardship, doesn't really seem to meet any kind of hardship, but if you look around, what I can say is there's no other hundred-by-hundred-foot corner lots that I see. So it seems like all the other ones that were there have already been either subdivided or they were never there to, to, to begin with. So if we have to look at it that way, I'll look at it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Covelli?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, yeah, hardship, uh, discussion aside, I think, uh, it, it seems like a a beneficial project and no pushback from, uh, you know, the, the neighborhood or anybody nearby, so, I think it's a good, a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll offer my comments. Uh, my concern is that, um, the, the point of hardship, um, was at least approaching lot, the owner of lot nine to try to buy that parcel. Um, that's a 5,000 square foot lot of 50 by 100. That may have allowed one of the lots to be compliant, the interior, but not the, uh, not the corner lot. So we still would have been looking at some variances, even if you were successful in, uh, negotiating something to purchase that. I personally think this is better suited for a C2 than a C1. I think the applicant missed the mark there, um, because certainly, uh, this is a much better design option for all the reasons that were mentioned. Um, but it's a tougher sell as a hardship, a better sell as a C2, better design option, so, um, that certainly would have been, um, my choice in terms of, uh, how to pursue this. But at this point, uh, obviously we've noticed for a C1, so we can't switch gears mid-stream and go to a C2 variance, but, uh, we are where we are, so. All right, Doug, would you summarize, please?
Yes, this is a minor subdivision application, um, lot into two, uh, for the, uh, for block 101, lot 10. Uh, the applicant, uh, you've heard their presentation with regard to the variance relief. You've heard the presentation, uh, with regard to their request for waivers, with regard to the request for waivers. You've also heard, uh, the testimony presented by our engineer as to his belief that the waivers are appropriately granted in this instance. Um, any approval? My, my framing of the resolution this instance is in the frame of a positive, so I vote yes as a vote for the application. The applicant will have, uh, the following conditions, uh, that the applicant shall, uh, conform, uh, its development of its site in accordance with the shade tree commission recommendations by way of plantings. We've heard the discussion with regard to the shade trees or whether or not they, they fit on the property or not. You've also heard that there'll be a condition concerning permeable surface, that the pavers that are being used and the credits that are being employed by the applicant of this instance are actually going to conform and make sure that they are permeable surfaces, they have a consultation with our engineer. You've heard testimony that there'll be a condition concerning site drainage for the property, combination of perforated pipe below the, uh, the driveway areas as well as making sure that in the event the site is developed, well, however the site is developed, the applicant discussed that any sump, uh, developed will make sure that it has some type of container system there, but that any overflow will go in accordance with the direction of our engineer. So that basically have an infiltration recharge system. The applicant has agreed that it will place a, uh, conform its plans to show, uh, the site triangle for, uh, property in that instance, making sure that there weren't any, that if, for some reason, a portion of the properties within the site triangle, that there aren't any plantings that, uh, fall foul of our ordinance requirements. Pavers, again, pervy, pervious pavers will again be used to develop the parking areas. Uh, the applicant shall also, with regard to those patio areas to the rear of each one of the properties, uh, the applicant has testified that they will, uh, present a diagram or a plan and will produce as-built conditions, so that there's a step up, there's been a mention of sort of an eight inches, so that to preclude parking from sort of sliding over into that patio area. Uh, and that is contained with regard to the, uh, the area for the driveway areas. Let me get my notes, I think that covers the things that, I think that covers all of the conditions. Obviously, the properties will be developed of underground services, covered utilities to each site, the appropriate performance guarantees, uh, providing for the provision of the site development, I think, with the, uh, plans submitted. That's your application this instance for minor site plan with variance and waiver relief. A yes vote as a vote for. Uh, yes, unless there's additional conditions that the members have that I've missed, yes for a motion and a second.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions as summarized by Mr. Kovats, as well as anything that may be a condition in recording that we may have missed?
Hello, officer.
I'm sorry, I think Rick, I heard a motion and Ted, I think I heard a second, is that fair?
Second.
Thank you. April, please.
Mr. Lindsay? Oh, you're on mute.
Uh, I vote yes and it should move forward. It's not a perfect project, none is, but I think it's overall beneficial to Belmar and proper.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Protonitis?
Yes.
Mr. Covelli?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Yes, this is approved.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, any other business before the board, the good of the board?
I don't think so. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, just before you, hypertext.
Okay, go ahead.
We did open the public on the, on the application itself, we technically should open up to the public for any other topic. This is their meeting to be heard.
Okay.
In March.
Anyone from the public want to discuss this application or anything else relevant to the planning board? If you'd like to, please state your name, spell it and provide your street address.
No hands.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, Doug.
Here you go.
It's been a while since I've been doing these. Can I get a motion to, uh, close this evening's meeting?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Good.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Good night, everyone.
You guys stay safe, gentlemen, stay safe.
Take care.
See everybody soon.
Good night, everyone.
Good night all.